Excellent. You're all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. All right, we will proceed with public comments.
Hi, friends.
Hello.
Here we go. All right, thanks. So I'm here to talk a little bit about MECO, but I want to begin by acknowledging my ignorance. All right, I haven't spoken with anybody in SPS about my concerns, so I am certain to have incomplete information. I do, however, have two observations. Once again, Situate Public Schools is looking for a new MECO director. And the other thing is that the acronym MECO never appears excuse me, never appears in the strategic plan. And I have to be honest, this makes me wonder about our commitment to the MECO program. So I'd ask that you consider the following. One, please form a standing subcommittee of school committee members, administrators, educators, students, and families to research other successful MECO programs and identify ways to improve Situate's MECO program. Do interviews, do site visits. To be sure, diversity, equity, love, inclusion, and trust all connect with MECO, but the MECO program deserves individualized attention. The turnover in staff and going back at least six years makes this clear. Two, I ask that you conduct formal exit interviews or focus groups with former Situate MECO staff, former Boston resident students, and Boston resident families to identify weaknesses in the program and ways to improve it. Keep the results anonymous. Go to Boston to do this. The anecdotes that I've heard based on the relationships I formed with dozens of former Boston resident students are heartbreaking. Three, make the budgetary commitment needed to improve our MECO staffing and programs. Strong MECO program benefits all MECO students, which is to say, all of our students. And finally, please ensure that the MECO director in visionary position is reposted in early 2024 so that adjustments can be made based on the MECO subcommittee's recommendations and on budgetary improvements. I thank you for your consideration. I thank you for your time. And I thank you for all of your efforts to make SPS the best it can be.
Thank you, Mr. Spock. Just looking online first.
Ms. Brandolini, you have no hands raised virtually.
Thank you so much. All right. Okay, so this is actually a perfect opportunity and segue here. So I should say next agenda item. So to review school committee operating protocols. So just real quick, I think, you know, just as best practices as we start the new school year, to sort of periodically review any of our procedures and protocols is best practice. So, you know, to kind of just refer to our current operating protocols, this is available on the Situate sit.org website and under School Committee tab. And I'm not going to read it, obviously, out loud verbatim, but it's there for anyone to review. It establishes sort of the role of our committee and all the processes that we adhere to. Setting goals, you know, establishing visions, advocating for needs of all students. Obviously, it makes note of conduct, of professional conduct as school committee members, and also conducting business and meetings through our agenda, following Robert's rules of order. Let's see. And respecting open meeting laws. And also makes note of encouraging and supporting community members who attend meetings to participate during public comment. So to that end, you know, sort of just making sure that it's, you know, it's important that anyone who makes public comment at our meetings, you know, participation is vital and important, and we encourage any and all to attend and speak at meetings. I think it gets a little difficult sometimes during that time to get any sort of, you know, response because it's not an opportunity for response. It's more a comment time. So I'm going to do my best to direct folks to whoever the expert may be at the time. So even per our last public comment speaker, you know, exactly. So we, you know, I agree with you. I think we need that. And we would like to see that on our agenda as well. But, you know, again, didn't want to have that on for tonight without reviewing sort of the facts and getting it on our agenda as an official agenda item. So definitely. And, you know, again, referring to appropriate parties for additional follow-up as needed. It's really important to myself, and I know I kind of speak for our fellow committee members, that information be given clearly, timely, and accurately. And I, you know, I'm proposing this to our committee as like, I've had conversations with Superintendent Burkhead that this be, you know, sort of part of maybe a school committee goal for 2023, '24, that it's tied to communication. But I just wanted to put that out there that we also have an opportunity to review these operating protocols. We could have a subcommittee of two school committee members, just as, again, a best practice. And we, these are from maybe two or three years ago at this point. So we could review, see what's out there, if we wanted to add or change anything. And that, that is what I propose to you all. If anyone wants to do a subcommittee, just review any of these operating protocols. I would be happy to join a subcommittee. I think it's really important. I'd be interested and eager to do it. Okay. Anybody else want to do it? I'm happy to do it if you, if anyone else, you want to do it.
I can do that.
Okay. All right, so Janice and Maria. Carrie, I'm so sorry. I'm trying to. Carrie, feel free to unmute if you want to add anything.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. So we can do that. And yeah, again, it's really important that, you know, we're really working hard to provide everyone in the district and everyone in the community with facts and important information, and be good listeners, and just sort of take in everything and anything that we need to, and also to, you know, correct any erroneous information with facts, you know, as efficiently as we can to the parties that have the correct information. And so that is part of our standard operating protocols and something we will continue to work on and improve on each and every meeting. Any other, anything anyone school committee would like to add?
I did have a question. I was curious about whether this is an okay time to just correct something from last meeting that was brought up in public comment, just a point of clarification. Am I allowed to do that?
Point of clarification?
Yes, sure. Yes. I just wanted to bring up the, I think at our last, well, no, at our last school committee meeting, a couple of public comments were made requesting that we, as a school committee, choose not to adopt the new health and physical wellness or physical education standards that are currently being reviewed and potentially updated at the state level. And that's actually not in our purview. We cannot opt out of standards that are developed by the state of Massachusetts as a public school district. And so I know we have opt-out procedures that parents may individually follow, but it's not something that we, as a committee, could even take up. And I just think that's important to just know that as a public school district, we are beholden to the standards that are set by the state. And also that the health and physical education standards, I think the last time they were updated was in the 90s. And so they're undergoing a process right now. Public comment was open in the summer. And I believe the next steps would be for the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to vote on those, at which point, at some point, it would come down to districts for implementation. But we're, I think, still several steps away from that and also a good bit of time away from that. But I just think it's important to know that when they are adopted or if they are adopted at the state level, we inherently also adopt them.
All right. Thank you, Maria. Yes, that's true. And we do receive from mask policy updates and suggested reviews and things that are going on at the state level. I would say honestly, almost daily. Oh, really? Sometimes. So we do take that really seriously amongst, you know, I know that this committee does. And we are always, always reading and always learning more and always asking questions. So for sure, we definitely commit to that. Okay, to that end, I think maybe next meeting, we can talk more about school committee goals specifically and add that to our agenda. That's something we need to jump in on for '23, '24. We'll do that. Start with that next time. Okay, anything else anyone would like to add before we move forward? Great. I would like to take some agenda items out of order. I'd like to suggest that we jump to acceptance of gifts just so that people don't need to spend the rainy night with us. So unless I hear any objections to that, we will do so. Okay. Super 10 Burkhead, you good with this? Jumping out of water?
I absolutely agree.
Thank you. All right, acceptance of gifts. The Situate Education Foundation with Dr. Tom Rapp. And we have Board Member Sheila Koozis of us. You wanted to come up with Tom or you don't? Nope. Jessica Boylan. On the agenda. All right. Mr. Rapp.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, I'm very pleased to present the donations on behalf of the Situate Education Foundation this evening. As you have on your sheet there, and I'll just give a brief overview. The SPS Dosen Art Program for $1,260. And in addition to the Situate Education Foundation, the Situate Friends of Music together, they're putting a partial funding together to buy a new marimba for the recent art. And marimas are expensive, and so it's wonderful that we have an opportunity for dual funding for those. Give me a break space from Emily Ross, a special education teacher, and Bryn Neinberg, PT and physical therapist, for $1,050. A diving deep into the ocean at the Early Childhood Center for $750. Interactive workspaces for the classroom for Ross Matty and Eric Vagerlin for $1,800. And a battle of the books from a series of teachers for $3,669.8 for a total donation of $11,029.8 to Shu.
All right, to take a motion. Thank you. I make a motion to accept with great appreciation the Situate Education Foundation donation.
Second.
Okay. Second by Mr. Gates. We will do roll call vote. We have Dr. Bokowski remotely here. Lynn Blom?
Yes.
Brandolini, yes. Gates?
Yes.
Benwick, yes. Bokowski?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and we have a Situate Community Christmas with Tammy Rundle.
Thank you for having me. Can you hear me? Thank you for having me. I'm just here to thank the Situate Community Christmas. They provided our students with over 50 backpacks and school-related supplies to get the year off right for our students. The generosity of Situate Community Christmas is overwhelming. They have been wonderful to work with. They are always open and helpful to our students. They work well with the counselors in terms of need, any need that we have. They're able to meet. So I just wanted to, on my sense of a thank you letter for that.
Thank you so much. Motion on the Community Christmas gift. I will move to accept with great appreciation the donation from Situate Community Christmas.
I will second.
Second by Mr. Gates. Roll call vote. Lynn Blom?
Yes.
Brandolini, yes. Gates?
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
Bokowski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. For you.
Thank you.
Flip back to the other standard agenda here. So moving forward with a leadership report, Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you. I'm Ms. Brandolini, and good evening, everyone. Want to start off by introducing a new member of staff we're excited to have here and have new director of human resources. And before I get to that, I just want to thank the committee, that hiring committee, or the interview committee, I should say. Ms. Heidi Driscoll, Assistant Superintendent. Dr. Tom Rapp, Director of Business and Finance. School committee chair Nicole Brandolini. Bob Clark from the Town HR, Town HR Director. Sin Seeso, excuse me, Council Perigal and Eagle Specialist. Ken Peters, Central Office of Initiative Assistant. And Dave Smalley, a teacher. First round, second round, from Central Office. It was unanimous, easy choice for us. Our guest tonight here, I'm excited to have her start October 1st. Let me tell you a little bit about her, and then we can welcome her next group. So welcome, Taisha Flucker, Director of Human Resources. Situate Public, it's nice to bring to it. Situate Public Schools is pleased to announce the hiring of Ms. Taisha Flucker as Director of Human Resources. Ms. Flucker will begin effective October 1st, 2023, which is soon. Ms. Flucker is going into her 11th year working in private and public school human resources. She was most recently the Director of Human Resources in the public schools at Brookline. Prior to her time in Brookline, she served as the Secondary Network Human Capital Strategy Manager at Boston Public Schools, overseeing the district's staffing assignments and reorganizations. Prior to that position, she served as a human resources recruiter and coordinator at Marinatha High School in Pasadena, California. Ms. Flucker played in the Women's National Basketball Association, the WNBA, for three seasons after being drafted in the first round of the 2006 WNBA draft, following her collegiate experience in the University of Tennessee, where she had three Final Four appearances and two SEC titles. For you, those of you that don't know the acronyms, that's big time basketball. Ms. Flucker holds a BA in Service Management from the University of Tennessee, a Master of Arts in Human Resources from Ottawa University, Kansas, and has designations as PHR, Professional of Human Resources, from Human Resource Certification Institute. Ms. Flucker has been described as a leader, mentor, and good listener. Ms. Flucker looks forward to bringing the human into human services by establishing equitable, inviting, and trustworthy relationships with each Situate Public School employee and the community's constituents at large. Ms. Flucker enjoys spending time with her family and friends, traveling, knitting, and is a self-designated foodie. She is the mother of three beautiful children, two of which are here tonight. I see in the back, 12-year-old, and 12-year-old daughter and seven-year-old twin boys. Please join us in welcoming Ms. Taisha Flucker, Director of Human Resources for the Situate Public Schools. And we want to thank Ms. Bonnie Donahue for all her service and not forget all the great work she's done, and handing the tone over to Taisha. Welcome.
Thank you. That one's not working.
Maybe not.
Well, thank you very much for having me. I'm super excited to join the team, to join Superintendent Burkhead's team. It's with great pleasure that I get the opportunity to help move the needle forward and all the lit work. And I had the opportunity and was invited to one of the retreat days to go over the strategic plan. So I'm really excited to actually be a part of it, to help implement the human resources pieces of it, to bring the wealth of knowledge that I have. And I am super, super excited to bring my skill set here and bring the human back into human resources. And I appreciate all the welcoming messages that I receive from the team. And thank you for having me tonight as well.
Thank you so much for being here. Bye. So is there overlap with Bonnie?
Great question. So yes, there's one month where we purposely wanted Ms. Flucker and Ms. Donahue can hand it over. But also, there's a lot of institutional knowledge with Ms. Donahue here. We wanted to make sure we took advantage of that. So two human resources directors for a short period of time, which will ensure smooth transitions of payroll, hiring, and all the important work that goes into that. So we won't miss a beat.
Great. Because Bonnie's a great teacher. So I want to, again, thank Bonnie for all the service. And she's a great teacher.
Yeah, I'm definitely looking forward to working with her. I've started jobs where you don't necessarily get that opportunity to have any transition time. It's just kind of like you get thrown in the fire or you just have to like swim or sink, right? So I'm definitely looking forward to having that month to like download as much information as she can give me and to help build on the foundation that she's put in place for the over 20 years that she's been here. So they choose to fill, but I'm excited. And I wear sunscreen. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
Welcome.
Right. We have one other thing, I think, that was very important. So kind of whirlwind was last week and leading up to Friday with our MECO program. And I wanted to make sure I addressed it because I knew rumors are swirling and a public comment on it this evening. So it's with a heavy heart that I announced the departure of two special people from our district in the coming weeks. Mr. Darrell David and Mr. Markevious Barnes will be taking on new challenges. I know they will be successful and wish them the best. Certainly has a direct impact on our MECO program and our district. Please know that hiring the best and next MECO leadership team is of the highest priority, along with a transition plan that allows us continued support of our students and families who live in Boston. Both positions will stay in place and be filled. And for all those high school students, the oasis space that you currently enjoy will continue to be available for all our students. Ongoing, and that was a question brought up, wanted to address this evening. The situation is not new to this Situate. Unfortunately, when I first arrived as superintendent, we had faced a similar situation where MECO director during the school year. And I worked closely with our team to recruit Mr. David, who came in doing us a favor. It's a little behind-the-scenes stuff. He has a, he's an international DJ and had a full-time job. And we brought him in, and it was a one-year deal, and he traveled. Some people don't know this during the year. He would travel as part of his contract. We didn't allow that as part of our initial deal to get him a stay because he was so awesome and continued to do so. And now with that, and I believe he's ownership of a new, part ownership of a new restaurant. Got a lot going on. So we wish him the best. He will be very successful. But he's here for another month. He'll be here through November. Mr. Barnes also has come on and done some great things. I'll share some of those later here. It's a great team and a big loss for us. Our, our vision, MECO, is aligned with our district strategic plan via the mission and vision, which holds that collectively, "we," capital W-E on purpose, will work together to inspire, support, and challenge all learners. So all of us are in this together. It's not just our MECO leadership. Have full confidence that our students, families, and program will persevere and thrive through this. Mr. David and Mr. Barnes have developed the foundation for our program based in trust, including a new anchor program and a grant opportunity that is soon to show the public. Look forward to continuing the great work they've laid, and thank you. We will continue to update the committee on our progress. And anyone certainly can reach out to me. And I know there, when we met, we wanted to give them the courtesy of speaking to parents and the students, let them know. And then it'll be a tomorrow, the Hollings theme, it'll be an announcement from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkhead. Anyone? Question for Tom, just said. I wanted to say, Superintendent Burkhead, I appreciate you mentioning that about the strategic plan and the "we" component. Agreed as a member of the strategic planning, for sure, that was of utmost importance, that it was a "we" initiative and not, you know, not calling out any, any particular, you know, it was, it was kind of how we all, you know, we are one Situate Public Schools. So I think that's important and, you know, look forward to more conversations about what things look like for next steps for the program.
I will say too that Mr. Spockley's advice was great. Shouldn't be, welcome to hear that, and I'll follow up with him. I think that's real good advice. We only want to improve and do what's best for our kids. So we can learn from this.
I was just curious if you have a timeline because I think whenever someone leaves in the middle of the square, it's so hard. You want to rush and fill the position. But also, we do want to make sure we get the right person. So I was just curious if you've thought about that yet. I know it's off soon.
100%, we'll get that out. Like I said, it happened Friday. Though we already got wheels in motion. In fact, I already tasked Ty with one of our first recruits to go find us some great people to apply, and we're all working on that. So yeah, similar to any other position, we've met as a leadership team. And we'll get the timeline out there like we've done with all other positions. And then we'll match that timeline up when, you know, kind of already talked about with Mr. David when he left. So that's the November 1st date there is, is some help to us certainly. Sort of align with that somewhat. So yeah. And we'll, like we've done with everybody else, but we'll get that timeline out to folks. But not rush. Do it right. Get the best person, people. And have a plan also. If there is a lapse in time between departure and the new folks joining in, we'll have a plan for that. Thank you.
I feel like I have a lot more questions, but I don't think you're about that particular topic. But I'm just not going to give you all time to generate the answers or ask any more questions about it. Okay. Sounds good. Anybody else? All right. We have Assistant Superintendent's report. Assistant Superintendent Driscoll. Okay, what I'm sharing with you today are some tools on our website. A little shorter. Is this okay? So I'm going to share my screen, and we're just starting with our sit.org website. And to just do that, just a second. Okay. So the first thing I wanted to show everyone is a little bit about the navigation. We've had this for about a year now. And some people might not realize that we actually have a search tool at the top of our website on every school page and on our district page. And even though we all love a good dropdown menu with all these different things, the easiest way to find any information on our website is by going to the search. So if you click "Search", and what you are looking for, you will get a list of everything with that keyword that you put in. So if you're looking for recent posts about a particular topic or any item, you just write the one word, and the fewer words, the better. You'll get more results, and then you can click through. So this, the word "transportation", simply in the search takes us to all of our district transportation information, including the application for transportation, frequently asked questions, every single school bus route, the school fee, MECO transportation, and then who to contact if you need more information. That's just one example. Another example, something exciting that everybody loves, our fourth graders. If you don't, for those of you who might not know, that's the year that they can start taking up an instrument at school, which is super exciting. So if I want to know what's going on with that because maybe the information hasn't come home in a backpack or anything like that, I can search for that here. And I can see that there's a fourth grade instrument demonstration. And here's the fourth grade instrument sign-ups. I'm going to check that out. And this looks identical to what you see on your app. You'll see this image, and then you see all of the information that you need about the fourth grade instrument signup. There's actually a Zoom meeting that's happening for families. The information is right on here. The deadline for selecting instruments. It even takes you to the music signup form, which is not on paper. Jim Thomas and his team did a great job setting this up so you can see the complete introduction to what you need to do, the step-by-step demonstration, information, how to choose your instrument. That's just an example. And. Okay. I'm going to have to reshare my screen. It's stuck there. Yeah, Rose, reconnect it. But one department I did want to share with everyone is if you go to the district website, sit.org and you go to academics, there's a lot of really great tools to learn about what we do and what we teach. So on the academics page, you see the Department of Education's educational vision, which drives everything in the state. You see a link to the current frameworks and those are the frameworks that we do need to follow currently. You'll see them listed and any draft frameworks are also listed and identified as drafts. I have those again here. But this particular tool, the standards navigator, I'm going to show you because it's a wonderful tool that I don't think a lot of people know that we have. So when I click standards navigator, it takes us to the state tool to search all of the frameworks. So much like I can search by a keyword on our website, I can search all of the Massachusetts frameworks for any word that I want. So I can learn what happens in Massachusetts and what my kids learn about. So I'm going to use the word love. And I'm going to select, for our purposes, we do not need to select both tech. That would be like culinary arts, the vocational program, plumbing, those types of things. So we have academic and I'm going to select all brings. And then I want to check out the search. So if I scroll down, the great thing is anywhere that love exists, I will see in the frameworks, however, the word glove also has love in it. So I just need to understand that this is about gloves because it literally gives you any place that that word appears at all in the entire frameworks. So and you can see what, you know, the codes tell you what grade they're in and where you can find them. And then if you want to go dive deeper, you can look into the frameworks themselves. And then another thing that we have, and this is just a convenience for people, we have family guides. And we've been sharing these at our expectations nights. And there's one for every grade level for core academics. And it's a, I feel like a much easier version of what to expect in any particular grade level. And we have these pre-K all the way to high school. And there's some questions about what you can ask to make sure your kids are giving you more. When you ask, hey, how was your school day today? And they go, good. And you want to know more information, these are some questions. So I always ask my kids, hey, who did you eat lunch with today? But you can also say, tell me about something you read at school today. How could you use the math you learned today? And it outlines the things that your child will learn by the end of the year, the expectations and questions to ask your child, not only overall, but in the four core academic areas. And you'll read things like by the end of the second grade, students can do these things. And we have those for all, all grades. And we didn't make these up. These are guides given to us by the state. They're super helpful. And I'm going to show you one more time where those appear. So sit.org is our district website. If you do slash the name of the school or S H S, that's simply the website for all of our schools. But on the district website, if you go to departments and academics, you'll find these tools or links to these tools in every single family guide. So you don't have to search for them on the state. You'll also see our district report card whenever it becomes available, our accountability report, again, when it becomes available. And those are, that's tons of data and information that you can get about where we are as a district. Oh, sure. Let me show you one more thing. Let me share my screen. Something else that a lot of people have been asking for information about is our Cushing and Hatherley MSBA project. And if you go, I mean, you could search for MSBA, which will get you a ton of information, but you might want to go to the organized information, which is under community and Cushing Hatherley MSBA project. And you can see our project history, all of the school building committee meetings, information about the next meetings and forums, our process and timeline, and what we've been doing for community input. So that's a very sky view overview of some resources we have available on this. Any questions or if you want to look up?
Questions?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, we are moving to the Declaration of Surplus Textbooks, Dr. Tom Rapp.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So you have in front of you a list of textbooks from middle school and high school, put together by our E L A Department Chair, Laura Messner. And these are books that have served a useful life. So there's no comment here on the curriculum or what we're teaching. This is simply books that have just gotten too old. They're too beat up. They're too torn or ripped. And many of them either need to be replaced or sold. In some cases, we can sell them. In many cases, I, we want to discard them or find an environmentally friendly way to recycle them. So I won't read the entire list. You have them in front of you. But it's both books from the middle school and high school, and I'm going to be encouraging all of the department heads to go through their stuff and you'll probably see more of this like this starting to hear.
I just have a question about, you said some of the books are just in such poor condition, they need to be disposed of. Is there an opportunity to donate books that are in better condition to maybe not, to school districts that might not be able to obtain books like this?
Absolutely.
Because I'm looking at the list, those like classics on here. Some, a lot of books I've, I've read and other kids should have the opportunities to read them. I'm thinking of, you know, poor districts somewhere else in the country that could use them.
No, thank you. Once the school committee declares them surplus, then that gives us the freedom to reach out and make those contacts.
No.
All right, let's take a motion on the books.
I will make a motion to declare the textbook as surplus.
Motion by Mr. Gates. Second? Second by Ms. Lindblom. Rule called vote. Lindblom?
Yes.
Randalini, yes. Gates?
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
Porcoski?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next, our Situate Teachers Association memorandum of understanding.
Okay, so we had a collective bargaining agreement last year, three years with the Situate Teachers Association. And we had a couple of outstanding items that we elaborately agreed on would be addressed this year. And we included some language for the E C C, the family engagement pilot and the stipends. And I first would like to thank the, all the committees. Through this process, there were several subcommittees of teachers and administrators working together that weren't on the negotiations committee. Nice model to work together and come up with solutions. Then we bring them back to the larger committee during negotiations and made their job a little easier, but also a nice way to collaborate and come up with solutions together. I think that's the M O A you had before you that we shared executive session is agreement on that is ratified by the teachers at one of their first meetings this year. Also want to thank the S T A leadership for their goodwill and bargaining efforts. You see some nightmares, stories out there in the news and it's not like that at all here. And it was good collaborative approach and best for kids. So I want to thank our teachers for that. And I think this is a great document and I recommend the committee votes and approval.
Thank you Superintendent Burkhead. Make a motion on M O U.
I vote to approve, I make a motion to approve the Situate Teacher Association memorandum of understanding as written.
Motion by Ms. Lindblom. Oh, second. Second by Ms. Benwick. Rule called vote. Lindblom? Yes. Randalini, yes. Gates?
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
Porcoski?
Yes.
Just abstaining.
Oh.
Do I have to abstain because I wasn't there?
Great question.
materials.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right, we have some minutes to approve from our August meeting. Twenty eighth of August. Yes. Thank, anybody have any comments?
I make a motion to approve the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lindblom. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Ms. Benwick. Okay, rule called vote. Lindblom?
Yes.
Randalini, yes. Gates?
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
Porcoski?
Yes.
Oh, no. It was August. Figure it out. Lawrence?
Just the one.
Just the one. Okay, no correspondences. Any other business? Yes.
So I guess update this subcommittee slash liaison. We had a brief finance subcommittee meeting. Just starting to plan for next year's budget season, which believe it or not, this is when we start, which is kind of crazy, but this is what it is. And then we had our first meeting of the financial forecast team. And that was, I'm not sure the date I should know this, but a week or so ago. And we're going to meet fairly regularly because it's going to be a little bit different of a environment in the coming year. So we're going to watch it closely and see how we can, the town and the schools can benefit from the uncertain economic forecast in the near future.
That was it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gates, I appreciate that update. I think, does anyone think it would be helpful to have that sort of spelled out more in our agenda, subcommittee meeting updates? So it doesn't really go under other, yeah. If we don't have any, we just pass it by, but separating it from other business.
Yeah, I think it's helpful.
So what would that totally be?
Just liaisons. I think it used to be on there. And we never really.
Yeah. But it's part of our initiative, kind of, I think, you know, communication wise, important.
Nicole, I have a dumb, I have a dumb question.
No questions are dumb?
So I would assume you only want committee updates when we feel like it's relevant to what's going on with school committee, right? Because like capital planning, there's a lot of other things that they talk about. I did attend, but I'm not sure that any of it is, is really relevant. So I just want to clarify.
I think that's a good question. And I'm curious what the rest of the committee thinks. You want to know additional updates on subcommittees that we, or liaisons that we all attend that are quick and sort of, you know, bullet points about other goings-ons, or do we want to keep it strictly relevant for school?
I mean, the only worry I think with something like capital planning is that to the extent other monies crowd out the potential for school, school monies, right? But like some of the topics aren't relevant. So I just want to be, I just want, I just want you to know I'm going, but not always for the school committee. So.
Yeah, I think since the agendas are available and technically if we wanted to know what they talked about, we could find agendas and minutes. I think we should keep it to things that are relevant to
Yes.
our business.
Agreed.
Yeah, so we all agree. Relevant to school, school business pertinent information. Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any future agenda items? Anyone? I'd like to put school committee goals as a future agenda item, not future, near future, as in next time. Anybody else anything?
So like what Maria? Can you explain how, so goal, I know Janice and I agreed to review our communication and that's separate. I mean, that, that could be a goal, but that's not actually goals.
Correct.
So how do we work on the goals? Do we do it like like at a meeting, we do the whole thing? Or is there a subcommittee? Like, how does that happen?
Good question. So we have two, two pieces there. So technically three, if you include policy related things. But so operating protocols are one document and you two committed to reviewing and you can bring us an update next meeting. You may find, hey, we're, this looks great. Proceed, or you might say, well, in our research, we're suggesting going in this direction or adding this and you want to bring it to the committee. So at that, at our next meeting, it'd be great if you could kind of update us on what you found out. And also at our next meeting, we'll talk more about school committee goals. So we'll, we can pull up our twenty-two, twenty-three goals, sort of do a quick. It is, we are supposed to review those just to see, you know, where we are in those goals in the past year. And then we'll, at that time, have a new subcommittee of two of us who, so previously it was Dr. Porcoski and myself. We did, we kind of worked on that together and then brought it the document here and that is a public process of us formulating what goals. So Dr. Porcoski and I kind of had reached out to the committee and we had talked about it in public several times. You know, what, look at what our previous goals were for twenty-one, twenty-two. Where do we want to go from here? What is, maybe we're not finished with something and we want to continue it or we need more time. Or maybe we're adding new. This year, we're with the new strategic plan, it's sort of a different slight pivot, I guess you could say, because we sort of have, in a good way, better clarification. So we can all roll in the same direction as a district more tightly, which is great because previous to that, we didn't exactly have a guiding document like that. Or it didn't feel as though we had one that was workable at the time. So we'll look at what we have done together and then two people can volunteer to go do a deeper dive, you know, for creating some new goals. So again, it could be continuing some things that we haven't finished up on or going to the level, you know, the next level on that or, you know, something new that's on the horizon that we want to make sure we, we do based upon strategic plan. So that help at all? So similar to the operating protocols, but just a separate document.
Okay, so at the next meeting, we'll decide who that little subcommittee is. And the reason it's only two is because otherwise it would be a core.
Exactly. Yes. Yeah, it, it seems a little weird with having a small school committee of five members, but, but yes, our subcommittees are two individuals. Feels not much like a committee, but, but it works. And, and Dr. Porcoski and I got a lot done, I think, and it, you know, it went really smoothly. So I think we can do it again.
So Nicole, I would like to add if for future, so one, I've just gotten some questions from our community around the bullying policies at our schools. And I don't know if there's a way that Superintendent Burkhead could maybe bring that information just to, you know, I, I know you've done some updates on it and so perhaps you know, I know you've done some updates on it and so perhaps just sharing it again with the community would be a good opportunity. The other item, given what Mr. Scopoletti said tonight, and I've also, I know several of us have heard from other families in the community, I do think in parallel to the great work that Superintendent Burkhead and his team are gonna do in finding a new director, I would be very interested in hearing about best practices, like what models are out there that are working very well. I've had many opportunities to hear about the history of Metco and the purpose and mission of Metco. I have, I don't know very much about other programs and sort of their, their growth edges and their learning that has happened. And so I think in parallel to hiring someone, it would be really great if the community could hear what Superintendent Burkhead and his team are using as sort of the model. Like what can we be learning from other districts in the state? So I would love to be better educated on that if possible in a future meeting.
I love that idea. And I would also add, I wonder, I don't know if this is the case or not, but I wonder if the Metco program itself offers any guidance to districts on this type of thing. I assume that that's part of what they do, but I feel like that would be another resource that we could look to. Say, hey, like, help us think about this. What, you know, maybe help us look at our job descriptions or the way they were structuring the job and the program, just to get some recommendations. Yeah.
I have reached out to the director of Metco for help and they do, they're great. Yeah, so that's a great resource.
And that's, that's good information, thank you, Dr. Burkowski and Ms. Benwick. I think, you know, those are the questions that are coming up in the community as we're out and about and important information for the district to have too. Okay, great, so we have a lot of work ahead of us, which is wonderful. Anything else before I take a motion to adjourn? Yes?
So the timing is probably good. We had last year, it was part of our communication plan to be more organized and prepared. Prepared a calendar for the year for the committee on topics we will be presenting. Like every year, we do the budget, every year we do the superintendent's school committee goals. We have that just about ready, so we can send that to all of you to look at. That's a guide, subject to change, but it's a pretty good indicator of when things happen. Might be very helpful for all of you and you can share information with us that, you know, if you want to move things around and it's a good starting point and served us well last year. So we'll get that out to you guys this week and hopefully help you kind of prepare or see what we have planned and then, you know, kind of suggest as a Dr. Burkowski made, if there's other things that we need to fit in, where they, where you'd like to see those would be helpful.
Great, thanks so much, that's awesome, I love that document. Okay.
I guess the only other thing I say, Nicole, is I mentioned a couple of times. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm not, I would stay here and talk a lot.
Sorry.
You guys.
No, I think that this came up last year or, and we've talked about it more regularly, but the M.A.S., M.A.S., M.A.S. and M.A.S. and the joint conference in November. I know that we're, we've all kind of talked about that we're planning on going, but as we're getting close, I just want to make sure that we have some level of commitment. I think that maybe if one person or two people goes, we have representation there every day. I don't think all of us need to be there all three days. I think it's up to each one of us to know we all have jobs. But I think it's also a good opportunity. I didn't look at the actual, all the diff, I know they're still developing programs, but they probably have something relative to Metco or something that will, that will provide us help. But I just want us to iron out who can and who can't go.
Oh, we have to.
Yeah, so we'll figure it out.
And I've planned to go all the days and I'd like to go all the days.
Awesome.
Yeah. We already have registration, yeah.
Okay, all right, guys. And that's, yeah, it is a Friday of Veterans Day, which is good, I guess. We have school here, but I think it's a good day to potentially go.
But you don't have to go to school states. Correct. I think Mr. Peters sent something out to everybody and has signed folks up already, so.
Yeah, I think we've signed.
If you're still interested, but you hadn't signed up, each child will take care of it.
Yeah, yeah, like, yeah.
So we do have representation in the committee and from the central office.
It's amazing. I don't know if it's always been M.A.S. as well, has it been a joint conference you guys have?
It has.
Oh.
This is us where.
This is the first one.
Might be, yeah.
Yeah, which I think is a good idea.
I never got, yeah. It was always, the invitations always came through M.A.S.C. now, getting them done for both. So maybe it is a joint venture. Good idea.
I think it's good. Okay. So I'll firm up my availability and all that.
Wonderful.
I guess that's what it comes out to me.
No, that's great. I think it's gonna be nice to have a good presence there this year, for sure. I'm doing a dramatic pause in case anybody would like to add anything else.
Nope.
Okay. All right, we'll take, I'll take a motion to adjourn then. We are officially finished.
Motion to adjourn at 7:06.
A second. Opened by Ms. Lindblom. We'll call vote. Lindblom?
Yes.
Randalini? Yes. Gates?
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
Burkowski?
Yes.